Me either.
I know, see, it's crazy. Um, hey, I'm here and I'm on time. That's all you guys get today.
You're all here. Good morning, everybody. Looks like we're recording. So we have, uh, excuse me, work session. Uh, today is April 10th, and this is a work session in preparation for the Monday business meeting. So my intention for today is, as usual, these Saturday work sessions to go through our agenda, just to make sure that we're all on the same page and we're not anticipating any surprises. So, uh, at the beginning of the agenda, and I did hear Eric, if you, I have no problem moving any hot items for you to the top, so you can go and get some rest.
No, sir, I appreciate that. There won't be much rest now that teenagers are running amok. So I'm gonna just hang out as much as I can. I'm good.
You just kick them out. That's, that's the plan. But, okay, so then at the top, uh, dealing with Village Reports. Um, I haven't seen anything from Chief Delp yet for, for this month, but I'm, I'm gonna assume that there's not any big surprises that we're anticipating from him there.
No, and as far as I know, um, his basic report is in the council pocket.
Is it? Okay.
It should be. If it's not, that's my fault, that it's not in, uh, cause I, I'm pretty sure it's in there.
He may just have scanned over it, is all. Um, any big news from Mike Flickinger?
I'll get his report Monday morning. He typically sends me an email to go over all of the projects, and that's usually what I read on Mondays. Um, I'm gonna go with probably because we have a whole bunch of different task orders we're looking to increase and do, and, um, so probably, they'll probably be quite a bit.
Very good. Uh, and I guess just sailing through here, uh, any fiscal officer, I think the last thing we were doing in fiscal was, uh, talking about TIF, and I saw you saw, you sent out the thing looking for volunteers. I saw a couple of hands raised. Did we get what we needed there?
So yes, that's also in the legislation, and thank you to everybody that did volunteer. So what I will say on that is, um, that is, and Jesse, if, if I say anything wrong, you can yell at me and correct me. So here's what I'm gonna tell you. I received a phone call from somebody from Franklin County Auditor um, about two weeks ago telling me that, that we are supposed to have two members, two residents from our village to sit on a, um, board that consists of seven people, including the Franklin County people at the auditor and all of that, to go over how we spend the TIF money. What money, how much money came in, how much money did we spend, and where did we spend the money? So our fiscal team will get together all of the information once it's received to exactly what, all of the answers to their questions. And then it's, it's basically a, um, an hour, two-hour meeting, I believe around an hour for us. They said it would be pretty simple because we don't have multiple TIFs and we didn't spend any money other than, um, paying for the dam. He did say we may even have to bring in information for the dam. Um, he said that we should be okay because we didn't do this last year, and we should have done this the last couple of years. Um, but nobody knew that we had to do this, obviously. So it's something that, again, live and learn. He said we would be, he goes, yeah, you guys will be fine. Um, he goes, but they'll probably ask you why you didn't do it. So anyways, I did get a couple of volunteers, but I just kinda wanted to tell you what that's for. Um, and then to go a little further on fiscal, um, it's something that I would like to talk about for like three minutes, whether we do it now or later. Um, you know, we had discussed, and I'm gonna use my words, not your guys' words or whatever, but like borrowing against the TIF or borrowing against, we had talked to, um, I believe it's Emmett, um, with, uh, our law firm, and we can continue to move that route, at least to get some information. Do we wanna do that? Do we not wanna do it? What would it end up looking like? Um, obviously, there's gonna be fees attached to that because you're gonna have Kim working more hours towards that. You're gonna have our law team working more towards that. Um, so there is gonna be additional cost if we want to explore that route, and I need to know if you guys want to explore that route. Or if you guys just want to look at, and Kim and Leah are also full speed ahead to do this part as well. Um, calling and moving forward, just doing a basic government-type loan. Um, obviously, I think we all know interest rates are pretty inexpensive right now, and just dealing with the building. So what does that look like for all of the other projects? Not much, as you guys are aware. So, you know, basically going against the TIF, going against, looking into that would enable us to do more projects. Um, or we just go, and I think, you know, maybe some, maybe this is part of a conversation that we need to have. And Brian, this is again up to you, if you wanna lead it to this for a couple of minutes later on, or now, um, a priority list, you know, what, what is everybody's feelings? Because I don't want to spend a crap ton of money looking into the TIF if everybody's not really on board spending the money to do. So I think here's what I would say. We were, we were given the task to find out if it was an option. The answer is most likely. Um, there's gonna be fees attached, there's going to be this or that, or we can go with a loan. So I think that was a question you guys were asking, and I think that's the answer. So where do we go from here?
I will, we'll circle. Let's get through the agenda, and I think that's a fine item to, to come back to.
A quick question, uh, with these people on the, putting on the committee, is that Resolution 2021-15, the Turk designate, designate?
Yes.
What that is?
Yes.
Okay, just checking that.
All right. Uh, Jesse, any, uh, any major update or any update for, for legal?
Uh, nothing. I know that Mike is working with both Columbus and the contractor on the sewer, so I'm, I'm sure most of that will be included in his report, but I've been copying all that and just keeping an eye on any issues.
Okay. Uh, Tony, uh, anything you wanna give us a heads up on for a report for planning and zoning?
Well, uh, we canceled our meetings. That would be our, our update.
Perfect. That's all we need to know. All right, Eric, we, uh, we zip right up to you. Uh, what, uh, uh, you know, with relation to reports, what's, uh, what do you, what do you got to update us on?
Only thing I've talked of consequence about, uh, for your meeting on Monday is gonna be, obviously, the MI and discussion with the list, which you can wait till legislation to, to dive into. Um, and the other item to put aside some time for, uh, for discussion, obviously, if there's anything you wanna do, I sent in an email later yesterday, which had the items that the, um, Westerville Schools will be at your meeting in the front end, uh, and those are the two items that'll be in request form in front of you. They don't need to be in an ordinance form. It needs to be approved. Um, it's a condition upon P and Z's approval, so the two items in front of you will involve uh, the Farview road improvements coupled with the parking request. Um, and I can explain a little bit this evening or this morning, and they can, they'll go into their details and question and answer session on Monday for you.
Okay. Um, do you, you wanna give us the, the high level on, on those really quick now, then?
Yes, that's not a problem. Um, so on the, the traffic items have been a lot of going back and forth. Obviously, they were required to do a traffic report when they put the middle school in. There was a, had several meetings with their staff, which included Mike Flickinger, and then, uh, specifically his traffic engineer. So she has weighed in, uh, on it, and after a lot of discussion, uh, they came back with a plan, uh, that she is comfy with, and I think is appropriate based on the comments given to them for, to ease conflicts, um, and traffic flow, uh, with another school going in there, cause obviously you know how it exists now on drop-off and pickup, and we didn't wanna exacerbate the situation. We always wanna try to improve upon it, uh, whenever we do improvement. So they are agreeable to widening the road, putting in turn lanes, um, and other flow items as far as, you know, improvements are concerned in the, on Farview, at their expense. And then the parking item is, um, one of those are, we have a little, uh, a little niblet in our code, for lack of a better term, that, which actually is useful in this situation, that allows for, in the, in the middle school's case, they, in order to get all of their, um, their silver lead certification that they're aiming for here, I believe, they have to get points. Points are allotted, you know, with less impervious surface, energy efficiency, all the good stuff. This one comes back to parking where they wanted to put in less asphalt, so less impervious. Our code, as in most municipal situations, calls for a certain specific number. Uh, but the niblet of code allows them to, since they are also an adjoining property owner, uh, allows them to have overflow as needed onto that parking lot, which would be Hawthorne in this case. So that is their request in front of you, and there's one nice little chart that, uh, demonstrates what the required, uh, number of parking places is, and then how they would supplement that with what they wanna build versus what they've got on top of Hawthorne. And that is the, um, bird's eye view there.
So just to make sure I understood what you just said, the, what the ask is, is that there's a, there's a number that by code, the number of parking spaces they need based on the occupancy of the building, and they're looking to build less of it because they're, they're expecting the overflow to park at Hawthorne.
Correct, and that, that meets their needs for getting their certification.
And, and they, okay, I think we're, but.
Yep.
That's it in a nutshell.
Yeah, very good. Any, anything else, uh, for me?
I don't wanna take away from any of the mayor's thunder, what her discussion point was, um, but we'll need to just, I guess, schedule something for the building at some point, um, as part of that, just to, just to latch on to that. So we'll talk about that later from a scheduling standpoint. They need to, our committee need to come in and meet with you.
Okay. Excuse me, sorry. All right, Diane, I, I guess we're back to, it still says Diane for MPCA on the agenda. I don't know if it is still supposed to be Diane, maybe give us a heads up.
A quick answer is, somebody give me a final firm name, because I know we've, Diane's like, well, I've been there and Mark's there, and I think David's the one that's supposed to be, but he hasn't been able to go the last couple of times. So I don't care who's on there, and I, I know that we've talked about it three times, and I feel like I should know who's on there, but I really don't know who to put on there.
Who's, who's giving us an MPCA update?
Well, I don't actually go to the meetings. I just, at one point, thought that we needed someone and thought I could, you know, talk to the wife and get, cause she is at the meetings and get that information secondhand. If someone's actually going to the meetings, I would obviously defer to them.
I've not been able to attend the most recent few ones due to changes in my schedule, but I should be able to attend them going forward, but I, I do have that gap in attendance for the last few, sadly.
Right, so it gets us down to Diane. Do you have a?
I, I, I go to the meetings and I can report. I mean, it's not a problem. I don't wanna step on David's toes, cause he's supposed to be the liaison, but if he doesn't care, I go to the meetings and I'll be happy to get a summary in.
All right. Is there any, anything that we need a heads up on, uh, so as to not be surprised, uh, by anything important come Monday?
Well, uh, I don't, I'm not, not in the, in their, I'm not in the inner circle there, so of, uh, the actual, um,
Actual group.
Uh, what do you call it? The, I always wanna call them the chairs, but they're not the chairs.
Are they like a?
Officers, the officers.
That's what it is.
The officers, yeah. I'm not an officer, so I'm not in that inner circle, but, so I'm, I'm not aware of anything at this time.
All right. Well, then let's move, uh, move on down to committee reports. Uh, Councilperson McNamara. Yes. An overview of, of what you're intending to report on Monday?
Well, on Monday, um, I would like to, well, we need to have a meeting first off. Um, we haven't had one in a bit, and I'd like to discuss a little bit more about the potential of these TIF funds, which we need to find out more about, obviously. Um, because I remember prior to our Easter recess, more or less, we had, um, discussed, or the mayor and I had discussed the possibility of using them along the lines of lake cleanup issues. Um, so the biggest thing would be that we need to have a meeting scheduled that I will announce. Um, would it be a problem to schedule a meeting sometime during this work session?
I'd say never anytime like the present. All the, all the committee members are here. Let's go ahead and get it on the books, and and your report can be as simple as, we haven't had a meeting in a while, and here's our next meeting schedule date, so.
That sounds like it'll be the case, honestly, this time around, cause I have a few things I'd like to, you know, tinker around with and talk about. Um, so how does, um, uh, how does next? Does anybody have any issues with, um, Tuesday or Wednesday next week?
I'm flexible.
This is the third person. There you go. So the two other members of your committee say they're good with either, so name it.
All right, so how about, let's do it on Tuesday. You guys good for, like, five o'clock, four o'clock, sometime late afternoon, or?
Well, later the better.
Later the better. So how about, like, uh, seven, like our normal committee stuff then, or our normal meeting times?
That would be good for me.
Joe, you good on that?
Yes.
All right, well, that'll be.
Mayor, Mayor Hughes, did you capture that?
Um, no, I'm trying to see whether or not I have a track meet that night, but I can't find it that fast. Okay, so if I do, you guys can have your meeting without me, and I'll try to zoom, or I can phone in. What day are we doing it?
Tuesday at seven, and if, yeah, I'd enjoy, I'd enjoy being able to talk about, you know, what we, you know, we expounding.
I'll find the schedule here in the next two or three minutes. I just, worst case, the teenager's asleep, or I'd go ask her.
We thought it coming up.
Good men, possibly Wednesday, if that works for you.
Yeah, she'll only have something one of the two days, and I'm sure she has something one of the two days. I'm just not sure which one it is.
Okay, so that's fine. Um, so yeah.
I'll know in two minutes, cause I'm probably gonna need it for the rest of the meetings, too.
That's fine. So, yeah, just, we'll discuss, you know, what, what we determine from the TIF stuff today, and we can determine or discuss. I, I've always wanted to talk more about the funding in the Mary Yost, um, you know, flower fund or whatever for beautification of our signs, you know, plants, some plantings around our entrance signs. I've been thinking about that every time I drive in, but again, that's all to be discussed in the meeting. That's, I've monopolized enough time.
No problem. Uh, moving on down the line, finance is the next. Finance did not actually have a meeting last month, if memory serves. Uh, we will, uh, you know, we, we need to get something scheduled so that we can continue to discuss this TIF stuff. Uh, so why don't we take this time to go ahead and get that scheduled, too? Uh, let me get my calendar up. Uh, how about, um, a week from Monday, right? Or no, the finance is the one we usually try to do during business hours. So what's the, what's, what can you speak to me, uh, mayor? Cause I, I can be available whenever.
She, this is how I typically do it. Give me two or three days. I'll send them to Kim and let her confirm it. She will confirm it as, possibly as early as today. Um, and then I'll send it back to you guys. So give me like, she, I'm trying to pull this.
Yeah, so I, my preference at this moment would be the latter half of next week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
I can't do Wednesday, so I do, I just found the schedule.
Okay.
But I can do Thursday, Friday.
On all those, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, I'm good.
And who's our third on finance? Is that Diane still?
Yeah, Diane's still chair, I believe.
No, I'm chair.
No, Brian's here.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Your chair, Diane is.
Yeah, uh, Thursday, Thursday or Friday, uh, or, um, well, I don't know. Uh, yeah, Thursday or Friday, okay. Six, fifteenth or sixteenth, right?
Correct.
Prefer a Thursday to a Friday.
Me, too.
No one wants to have Friday evening meetings.
Okay, I'm emailing her right now.
All right, once we get that back, we'll get that on the books. Uh, so let's move along, uh, to streets. Councilperson Curl, any, uh, any update to give us a heads up on, uh, before Monday?
Well, uh, there's a lot of stuff going on, cause Mike Flickinger plans to do a complete survey of all the streets and the road conditions and so forth. Well, uh, Mayor Hughes, maybe you could say a little bit about that.
Yes.
We haven't decided whether we're gonna do that yet, have we?
You guys decide that. I just give you the option to decide it.
Right.
Um, so a quick answer, that'll all be in legislation for, yes, Tony, for you guys to discuss whether or not you guys want to do that. Um, the price is in that one, and then just as an FYI flow line, there's still no prices, but I am still hopeful that they will be in there by Monday night. But we'll get into that in legislation.
Anything else from streets?
Um, I'll, Jesse, Jesse got to steal my thunder on that one, too. So Mike Flickinger, Jesse, and, um, the city of Columbus are going back and forth on the storm. I had told you guys that I had seen them in our back, in my backyard. I went and spoke to them, tried to find out what was going on. Long story short, they are in communications. There are emails going back and forth. We are trying to help Columbus figure out missing links, and we're, they are trying to help us figure out missing links, and I don't have a lot of detail, other than the fact that A is communicating to B right now, which is a great thing. Um, so that's that, and then, um, you guys are gonna determine whether or not we move forward on streets and the sewer televising and all of that, you guys. So that's gonna be all in front of you, and there was something else. Um, I'm hopeful that we'll have an update from Mike Flickinger that will answer the East Shore Court, and I'm, I'm crossing my fingers that we have some stuff to get that out to bid in the very, very, very near future. So keep your fingers crossed for information from Mike on that on Monday. And that's it. I don't have any, anything else.
Well, on, on, on East Shore, work continues here on my property.
Yeah, so there's, there's multiple projects that are actually combined into that project, and we have, there are more residents that are currently being affected by some of that stuff that's actually on Park Lane. Um, we're looking to replace a pipe that's over there, um, from emails that I found yesterday, cause I had somebody stop me. Um, cause we were having, they're having even more issues with, um, with their property, so.
When you say issues, what is, what?
So I, I don't wanna go crazy in detail on this right now and get into a big topic, and, and Tony, I can even show you, but I don't, do you remember that sinkhole that was next to somebody's house not long ago, like last year?
On Park Lane?
Yes.
Yeah, it's right behind Joe's house.
Yes, correct. So there's a pipe that goes between those two houses, and we're aware of the, the pipe that goes between those two houses. Um, but he feels like that pipe is broken. I'm just telling you, um, from the conversation I had, he feels like that pipe is broken. And he feels like that is the reason that he was having the sinkhole. I, I don't know the answer to that, cause I do know he ended up having a lot of work done on his own. Um, around his own home, but he feels like the, the pipe that's going between the two houses is making his house sink and causing cracks in his walls and his, um, landscaping is all falling in, the bricks are all falling in. And this has been, uh, this has been going on since Lynn was there. Um, this is part of the East Shore Court project as well, and you know, I'm, I'm just gonna say it, just like Joe and his neighbors, they are getting very frustrated, very frustrated.
Hasn't that part, hasn't that been televised?
Yes. And I believe, I believe that there's a re, uh, here's how I'm gonna say this politically correct with our law, uh, law director on here. I can only assume that we're replacing that pipe because there's a known, maybe there's something going on with it.
No, that's not. That, that one's getting replaced because of it not being the right sign.
The one between the two houses?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, and it is being upsized. You are correct about that, so maybe that's, that's part of it, but.
I've been out there the last time you complained about this, and it's, I don't think it's our problem. I'm not an engineer.
Other than it's too small.
It's, other than it's too small, right?
And, and again, his, he is one of the ones that had his car flood on the street, um, last year as well. So again, if it's too, regardless. So it's a project that we need to, um, make sure that we're, and, and Joe, Joe keeps us on board for that particular project, and no, I'm not throwing stones, but you know, he's on here. I know that that, it, it's a project that we've already approved. We're just waiting for the documents for Mike to move forward to get it bid, and then you guys have to approve it.
I'm gonna say this last time here, and maybe we can move on, but I don't think we should do anything until we figure out what Columbus is gonna figure out.
That could be five years. You can't let people's houses, you know, get destroyed and for five more years.
Well, I'll, I'll comment one thing, because, uh, when East Shore first started, none of the Parkview stuff was in there, but they have a lot of flooding issues, and, uh, you know, it's flooding into the streets also. And if there's a break in the pipe, the, the water, uh, builds up there enough that there's enough pressure in the water coming through the smaller pipe, that if there is a break in there, that would account for a sinkhole, because the water moves through there at quite a velocity. It would take quite a bit of earth with it. And, um, I didn't know about the sinkhole, but that would explain it.
Well, and the sinkhole was right, the sinkhole was right next to his house, and, and there were other issues, you know, so I, I, I don't know. I mean, I'm not the engineer, and I will, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna comment what I believe or why, or this or that. Um, other than the fact that we are fully aware that there are pipes that need resized and all of that, and, and, and again, Tony, I, I wish that we just don't, you, you can't continue to wait five more years to get, to start doing some of these projects, because the issue is, is every time we wait another year, it costs us another hundred thousand dollars because of twelve more things. We're just gonna have to upsize the pipe, do the things that we need to do. I think we need to oversize on the pipe. That's my personal opinion. Um, I don't think we should do the bare minimum. I think it should be big enough to accommodate even more, but that's just me. I don't wanna get into a sewer conversation right now.
Yeah.
Since you brought that up, I will mention, uh, the pipe that's going in here, I oversize for that very reason.
Yeah. And, and we all know that, just the last point to that, we all know that we've had bigger rains in the last couple of years.
All right, moving onward and upward, that was Streets Communication. Diane, did you, I know Communication had a meeting. Uh, do you have a, uh, an update or a, uh, give us a heads up on the report that we were expecting for Monday?
Um, yes, uh, we, uh, report that we did, uh, in fact, decide on the, um, uh, mass email text, I'm sorry, mass texting product, uh, that was purchased or leased, uh, and, uh, that was installed for the mayor, and now we just need to get people enrolled in it, and, um, so it'll just need more posting on Facebook. We'll put it in the newsletter a couple of times, and, uh, then when people start talking about it a little bit more, I think we'll get more subscribers, but it is, uh, it's ready to roll.
Can you tell how many we have on there yet? I know I haven't checked.
I haven't logged into the administrator, but yeah, it's right, it, it'll, it shows on the dashboard how many people are registered.
And if you guys have done that yet?
I haven't done that yet, but I could do it while we're talking about something else.
Really? Council hasn't even done it yet?
No, I, I signed up to get the, the text.
Good job. You get the A plus for the day. Mark, you failed, failed the test.
Oh, I already get, uh, all the information, cause I'm part of local government, and I know we have a limited number of texts per month, so.
Fair.
Doing as a. I didn't need to sign up for something where it's like, oh, is this happening? Oh, yeah, I already knew that.
Okay, well, next time you forget a food truck, I'm gonna say, well, you should have, you should have signed up.
Oh, food trucks are a little expensive and always unhealthy.
Trust me, I know.
Great. Uh, Diane, was that it for Communications?
The other thing, I'll, I'll mention, uh, as far as communications, uh, now's the time, as we did. I did finally talk to the, uh, website vendor regarding the other piece of software we were talking about that was six hundred dollars a year, and, uh, that one is the one that, uh, where people could, uh, on their own, go in and sign up for notifications, like we talked about, maybe a newsletter notification or uh, some other notification based on postings on the website. And, uh, we had discussed in the meeting, the prior meeting, the prior from last meeting, about how, well, you know, it sounded good, but, uh, would there, how easy would it be to do, and how fussy would it be? Such, how accurate would it be? So after, uh, getting the demo from the, the person from, um, Muni Code, um, it is, it is fussy. So, um, I'm on the, I personally am on the fence about it because it's fussy, and of course, I think, regardless, I think it might be a good tool at some point, but since we are, uh, the admin would be the one most likely to have to manage it. Uh, and we don't really have a man, uh, admin in place to play around with it. It's just gonna take a little bit of trial and error to, uh, and monitoring to find out, uh, or to, to make it work as efficiently as it, it should or could. So based on the fact that it's gonna be a little fussy, and that we don't have an admin right now, that's permanent. Um, I just wanted to, I wanted, I, I think we should just table it, uh, for now. Um, I just wanted to, I wanted, I, I think we should just table it uh, for now. So as far as that software goes. So that was the second thing we were looking at.
Okay.
I think that's, that's it then.
Very good. Uh, Tony, uh, heads up on the report for safety?
We didn't have a meeting, I don't think, since the last meeting.
Okay. I, I couldn't remember.
Maybe have chief, I'd like to set up a meeting though, with, maybe get with the chief and have him uh, see what days are best for him.
All right. Uh, and then that brings us to legislation. Councilperson Bruder.
All right. Well, it is going to be a packed schedule on that for Monday. If you've looked at the packet, we have about fourteen items to be read. Um, a lot of them though are second or third readings. I'm just going to real quick tick through any of them to see if anyone has anything they want to talk about, so we don't have to do it Monday. Um, our first thing is just the sale of the police vehicle. That's pretty straightforward. I don't think anyone has any questions or problems with that, right?
And that one is, they do want to pick it up on Tuesday. So that one is waive the third reading.
Passes an emergency.
And I, that's the way the legislation, I believe, and if it's not, please let me know, because that is the, that is the intent. Um, because they actually do need it and we are getting ours.
Okay. Awesome. So anyone have an objection to just getting that sold and out of here on Tuesday?
Let's do it.
Yep, here, nothing, we'll move on. We're doing our second reading of the asphalt. That's that strip of walking path there in front of the uh, South Lake, going from the dam to the building. I want to say that's fifteen thousand maximum. It's just a second reading.
Tiffany's got her hand raised.
Tiffany, go ahead.
You already know what I'm going to say. Asphalt season is full, in full effect. Um, three options. If we could potentially, if we're going to have the work session on April nineteenth, turn that into a meeting and maybe get some of this stuff read the last time and get some of it passed. I understand it's only a week. Um, but as it sits right now, if we do the three readings, um, we're at the Memorial Day weekend and then trying to get on somebody's schedule for asphalt in June, it's probably looking more like July if we don't get moving on this. Or if anybody's willing to waive the third reading and pass it, you know, whatever, all on you guys. You guys discuss it if you don't want to. I understand it's not an emergency. I, I will be the first to admit it's not an emergency, but people have been asking for it for two years and now that's up to you guys. Just my wish.
I also don't think it's controversial anyway, shape or form. And I, I would, I would support waiving a third reading and passing as an emergency so that we can get work done.
It's a safety hazard.
Yeah, it is in fact a safety hazard.
Yeah, and, and this is one of those things where it's, the difference between passing as emergency or not is whether we wait a month with our hands under our legs, not doing anything, or we just say, hey, this is kind of also part of regular order of business is that, yes, sometimes you say we want to get something done now. We have that option to get things done now.
I mean, I would love it. And if you guys sound like you're on board, I will get it fixed. That way you guys have the appropriate thing on Monday. Um, and then we can just get it done. I mean, I would appreciate it, but I, I, there's times I don't try to push you guys, but we are in current walking season. We got everybody out walking, riding, doing all that kind of stuff as you guys have seen. So I would love to get it done.
All right, next one is the village equipment flock. That is the license plate cameras and stuff. This is a second reading. Um, no one suggesting this, but I'll just point out there, this is one that I would not want to have emergency or waving things. Because I could see someone in the village saying, hey, I don't want cameras looking at my license plate and, you know, issues with it. And there's no hurry, but I don't think anyone on council has a problem with this.
Right.
All right, so moving on, next one is the twenty twenty-one storm sewer cleaning and video second reading. We all know what that is. That's just the yearly schedule of who gets cammed, who gets what.
Is that storm?
Sorry?
Storm, yeah. Yeah, that is storm.
Yeah, storm. Um, next we have the pavement condition. Uh, if you were checking your email this week, I think it was ten thousand eight hundred dollars, something like that. I could probably scroll down on my council packet and see it. Um, for getting the condition report. One of the things I really liked about it when I went back and read the actual estimate is it does then give recommendations of what to do and estimates of how much it should cost to do those things was part of the package. So it's not just them saying, yeah, this is bad pavement, which we could kind of do on our own. It's a little bit more perhaps worth that ten thousand dollars, but I know we haven't really talked about it yet.
I'd just like to real quickly state about that one is that I'm not much in favor of spending money to, to analyze the roads at this point. Because you know, the one area that we know of at Maplewood, Cleveland Avenue, you know, we've got plans on fixing that. The rest of the village, I don't know that you need that engineer to drive around to say that, you know, they need to be fixed. You know, but we'll bring that up in the street. I just want to let everyone know where I was coming from on that.
Well, Tony, we could schedule a streets meeting if you'd like to, you know, bring a discussion forward. I, or whether that's going under legislation, Mark, I don't know.
I would definitely refer that to streets. Um, this is scheduled as a second reading though, so we might then think about wanting to table it until streets can look at it.
I think so.
Once you get the second reading done and then.
And table before the third.
Yeah.
That makes perfect sense. Um, so where am I now? Sanitary sewer cleaning and video second reading. Once again, we have to cam these every year. That's what that is.
That's another one I'd like to talk about in streets. Because they're all working doing this storm sewer because we haven't ever done the storm sewers. But now sanitary, we're getting into this five-year cycle thing. And you know, I'm, I, I don't know that we really need to do that this year.
So the.
Again, in the streets, probably.
Yeah, uh, what I, what I'll say is that I, we have a document that we filed with the EPA, I think it's our C MOM, that in which we have indicated that we would conduct, I believe it was actually a seven-year cycle of televising, cleaning all of our sewers. So we are, you know, we, we just, as long as we maintain a compliance with that documentation, that's all we need.
That was something fine with the EPA?
Yeah, because we were under the, we were under the EPA consent orders uh, back when I was the service committee chair a few years ago.
So Tony.
Just now hitting five, maybe not even five yet.
So I will find out the date when we did Jordan Road last, just for the streets meeting. Um, and then Joe, if you could look, and I'm, I'm going to hurry, Mark. Uh, Joe, if you could look at the calendar and maybe schedule. We do have two weeks before the third reading and I think those are pretty quick conversations. We either want to move forward or we don't. So we could get a streets meeting in, in the next two weeks, maybe even on the nineteenth at like six o'clock and then do our work session at seven. I mean, I don't know, just giving.
Uh, the other members of the committee, I, I can make myself available at any time.
Um, do that too.
Could set it up right now.
Well, let Mark finish his thing because there's probably more, but you guys look at the calendar and see if we can just get one scheduled.
And I need my, I need my little brief uh, briefing with you too, Tiffany.
And we can do it at the same time. I can go through all of them with everybody.
Okay.
All right, now we're getting into some first ratings. Uh, twenty twenty-one thirteen is the necessity for a three-point-two mil levy, which I'm sure just sets out the official, hey, this is the money we've been getting and how we spend it and why we need it. The next one is placing that levy on the ballot. Uh, do we need to rush that at all or did we manage to get this in, in enough time that we're good?
We're good.
Okay, so we'll just have that. Um, I think everyone agrees we probably want to do that, but maybe not. So why don't I say, is there anyone who's going to argue about putting this renewal levy on a ballot? Or are we going to put it on there and let the villagers decide?
Let the people decide.
Looks like we're in agreement to at least put it on the ballot regardless of our personal feelings on whether we'll vote for it or not.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the quick answer is, is if people want a new building and people want all of these different things, we've given up one levy. We now have, you know, we've not done a fire contract and if we continue to give hundreds of thousands of dollars back, um, your budget's not going to work out.
Yeah.
Well, and this touches on communications, which Diane could, you know, speak to.
All right, so moving to twenty twenty fifteen, we have our Turk Designee. I already asked about that earlier in the meeting. Um, you said you had some volunteers. Do you have two finalists?
Is it not in there?
I haven't scrolled down. I'm looking at.
Yes. Um, I put in Diane and Brady Oxender. Um, we did have a lot of volunteers, so thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, and I honestly didn't, I had a couple of people really stressed that maybe it should be somebody that had a little bit of background in finance or, you know, this or that. Um, some people weren't thrilled about, they, they volunteered, but we're hoping that other people would do it. Um, so those were just, those I knew maybe had a little more flexibility. Because the issue that we have is we don't know what day of the week it is, what time it's going to be. It could be at nine o'clock in the morning, it could be four o'clock in the afternoon. So I'm hoping that the people, the two people, and we will know about two weeks in advance when the meeting's going to be. We don't get to set it.
And yep, it is in the actual, now that I've scrolled down to page twenty-nine of the packet, their names are in the legislation.
Yes.
Um, next we have twenty twenty-one sixteen, appointing the fiscal officer as the village designee for public record training. Um, I assume that just means we're going to train our fiscal officer to deal with public record requests.
No, so Leah has always done it. I'm not really sure, I'm assuming it's one point Kim did do it in twenty seventeen. That was the last time that that was updated. Um, Leah has been doing it. Leah has been doing it for quite a while. Leah and Becky were both certified in two thousand and nineteen. Um, and that document's just never been updated and I stumbled, it's kind of like, you know, I know Tony talks about this, um, when we talk about um, different ordinances and all of that. I stumbled across it and realized that it wasn't correct. And now it's in front of you.
Well, that brings up another thing that I, we keep forgetting about is the uh, records commission, you know.
So that was actually brought.
Every six months.
Yeah, that was actually brought up the other day too. Um, and that is something that I don't have legislation for that. And Jen Pocken actually just asked me about that um, Friday, Thursday, I think Thursday. So that's going to be the next one. And we actually do need to have a meeting. Um, because now that we have EMS and we no longer have EMS and there are certain things that we, we just, we have no idea what, that some of the documents that we found. So yes, that is something that's being brought to light already.
On it on and get on to the, you know, a, a schedule that we have of things. It's like this one keeps dropping through the,
It does.
Through the cracks constantly. Not that the records commission does a whole heck of a lot, but they're supposed to meet every six months.
See, I was thinking it was once a year, but yeah, it's something that we just started talking about literally. Leah asked me about it because of the EMS documents. And that was about a week and a half ago and then Jen just asked about it. So we'll see if we can get that scheduled ASAP. Um, and Jesse, I'll reach out to you because I believe you're on there as well to see what day would work for you.
Correct.
All right, and a couple of things to point out. I'm looking at the meeting packet right now. And that resolution twenty twenty-one sixteen is the last one that I have the full text on. Um, after that one, I just have, for the second page, the four that are on that, I do not have the text for that.
I'll make sure they get in there.
Um, so going to those four, uh, we have oh, five twenty twenty-one, amending section two oh four and one tenth of the codified uh, ordinances. That is the putting a, you know, if we want to change village flags and whatnot, that the board has to approve it. That's going to be a third reading.
And I think we sent that to Jesse. Jesse, did you have a chance to look at that or did you send it back to me? Because you might have.
I, I think I sent it back.
Yeah, I saw it sent back. It was uh, not, not terribly changed or worked to or there to make it, get better or more legally. Um, I do not know what oh, six twenty twenty-one is. That's our second reading supplemental. I can't remember from last week and we don't.
The supplemental appropriations is for the asphalt. That's number one. Um, but there's probably going to be other ones on there. So again, I will make sure that it's updated Monday for you to pull up that one. But that's going to, that I believe is just the asphalt. Um, but that supplemental appropriation is also going to need to be the road assessment if we end up doing that, or we're going to have to start another supplemental appropriation. Um, so, and the other part is there's, it is going to be updated, I believe, before Monday. Because the other thing is moving money around for, if you guys remember, um, our code enforcement officer is going to be paid differently. And that's going to have to be figured out on a supplemental appropriation more than likely.
Awesome. Um, when we get the hotels on that, we'll have them. Uh, then we have fourteen twenty twenty, which is that accepting the punch out and tend to pass as an emergency. If I, wow, Eric's jumping in. Um, if I recall correctly, that actually has a carve-out for some items. And then we also have the second reading of accepting the carve-out items, it looks like. And Eric, I believe is about to show us the list that we requested and take it away.
Thank you, sir. Um, so I fired this off yesterday. This is a list that was sent out some time ago. So obviously last year when um, we were getting with MI to do completion, as they were aiming for, you know, end of the year acceptance. Um, most of the items on there have a complete next to them. They did them early on, uh, or they did some a little later before December. Um, and I, I will simply highlight the ones that are uh, hard no's at this point. Um, we had been pushing them for some years to do golf cart bridge repairs. And what we mean by that is unfortunately, I wasn't here again when you guys did the original development plan. I would have asked for this then. It was not agreed to. They did do a repair on number three when there was a lot of debris that came down one of the floodways. Uh, and I like the one they did is right by the culvert over on the south side of it, the, the bridge. Uh, that one is a good, it's ti- it's higher, it's designed, it'll catch small children and people on wheeled things from going over the edge. Um, however, MI said we're not doing any more of those. We don't have to. We've done enough for the village, you know, not in a mean way. It's that we're just, we have to be a hard no somewhere. So there was a hard no. And I would say just for future projects, it's something we can copy. Um, the, moving on down the list. Uh, number seven was the other one for them. They were not doing anything around the dam area. Uh, they feel they are, you know, that is not their thing now. They're all done. It was accepted. Um, because I had asked for some, specifically in this case, and I'm not talking about the rip, the rip rap inside, you know, behind the spillway. I'm talking about, there's a fence right there that I wanted, you know, repaired. But it, it's there. It's just, and it's not needing to be fixed. It needs to be shored up. It needs one more pole and they just, they weren't going to do it. So it's something we'll just have to do, um, you know. And the only other one, well, the basketball court grass came up last year. They said they had seeded it, reseeded it actually, and they weren't doing it anymore. So they were done at the end of growing season last year. Uh, that was number twelve. They, after the basketball court got broken, part of the email back to me was Eric will repair it once Reserve J gets accepted. Uh, so they will spend the last amount of money on that. They did commit to that. Uh, the only other big item, uh, and this is due, you know, related to the carve-out is that um, we have a legitimate issue, uh, that's, you know, black and white in the mound and they are preparing their planned adjustment to go over to Mike to be reviewed. And they'll, engineers will handle that and make sure it's appropriate and they'll make adjustments based on Mike's recommendations. So that's number eleven. Uh, if there's any comments or questions, uh, let me know.
I've got a big, a big comment here is that, you know, now it sounds like it's a time that we know, we have to start digging in our deals with regards to the dam. You know, I, I knew this was going to end up happening and that, you know, we accepted it. So now that we've accepted it, they're not going to do any repairs to it. And you know, that, that's why I think Jesse, you need to, you know, chime in on this one. Because you know, what do we start, you know, start telling them we're not going to approve the tip money unless this gets fixed? Because to me, it's a major problem. It's going to just get, keep getting worse. And to say that we accepted it, I get, I understand that we accepted it, but that doesn't mean that it wasn't done correctly. You know, I don't know.
Not disagreeing with you. I, I want to simply point out, and, and I think, I think there's some discussion and I, I've had that discussion with Jesse uh, on the side already concerning some concerns around the rip rap and some other items. Again, this was kind of done, this was done in a separate area. And I would say it's not something from my viewpoint, and I'll let legal chime in there. My viewpoint, it's, that is not a reason to hold back the conveyance, obviously, is what we're discussing here. So, but I agree with you. I think there's some additional discussion to be had with legal on some options.
And I would agree with that. I don't, I don't know if it's raises, rises to the level that we could hold back conveying it. But we could, even after a conveyance, we could pursue them for, for repairs if we think they've not upheld their part of the, the bargain there.
Well, that's, I think, that's the way I, you know, envision this going is that, you know, we always have the releasing of the. the releasing of the tip funds is our uh, you know, out or whatever, the only leverage we have. Right, I think it's a legitimate concern.
Here's my, I, and I, I, I'm just in, what exactly, what number are we, like, what number are we talking?
Oh, no, uh.
No, no, it's, it's up in, um, I'm sorry, uh, the dam itself is on number seven, but it's, but, but it's not, what we're talking about here is not it was just a fence repair up at the top of the dam specific that I asked for regarding conveyance. What's that?
I don't see it on the list.
It's number, no, no, the, the dam fence railing repair is on number seven.
Well, yeah, but that's not what, I mean.
The dam itself, the dam work itself is not related to conveyance, that's why it's here. Jesse just said, so that, that's a very different.
Here, this is probably not gonna be a, a, maybe this is gonna be an ignorant statement and I'm just gonna say it, so. Maybe I don't exactly understand what MI homes, I mean, I understand that they they didn't do the repairs, they might have paid for it, but they didn't do, so.
That's between MI and the people that built the, built the dam, that's what my opinion about this.
Okay, so that, that's what I'm, that's exactly what I'm trying to get to because I feel like how is MI responsible for dam work that they didn't do because they paid, technically paid for it? Um, and I, I'm just trying to understand how.
It's like I'm a subcontract, if I'm a contractor and I sub something out, I'm responsible for what the subcontractor does.
No, I, again, I agree with what you're saying, I, I was trying to get to that point, that's what I was trying to figure out, if that's what you were saying.
Well, I don't see anything on here about lighting along that pathway.
Uh, yeah, that, that's gonna be on us.
Yeah, if we wanna add lighting, that's something that we.
Then our prop, on our property, all the lighting.
Yeah, that, that's a future project we can discuss, these are just, these, this is a punch out list from, you know, from a conveyance acceptance standpoint for all the reserve areas.
I just wanted to let everybody know where, you know, that I have concerns about the dam and. We can convey it and still, uh, have an, have options.
And what are the concern, what, what are the, the problem issues with the dam, I know at one point the erosion on the path, but I noticed that they put down blocks on that where the, the channel's gonna run.
So, so inevitably, what's, if you stand at the dam and look, look to the east where the spillway is, what, what has happened and, and it's, it's one of those things that just I, I don't, it's, I don't think it's to the point of major hillside mitigation. I think, y- you know, I have, have the engineers fully weighed in on that, but I, I definitively think you know, when they put these things down, water does its own thing, right, water is a major eroder and of course part of calculations that go into how spillways and water flow work is of course running averages and numbers and history and all of that stuff now. Everyone recalls, we, we've done a number of things differently, you know, and specifically, we've had a lot more water in the last couple of years now. That has caused, from my observation, um, you know, I've taken a few photos over time, that has caused some changes to the hillside, some erosion where it was not anticipated, that's because of the way the water's flowing there. I can clearly see and project that the hillside is deteriorating, what will eventually happen, then of course your pathway, that's going up the hill is not far from that. Trees are already starting, you know, to lose their root containment and they're gonna start falling into that area. Um, you will have major hillside restoration, which is more and more expensive if, but I think the cheapest solution, and again, I leave this to the engineers for final decision. I think the cheapest solution is to add rip rap, more rock. You know, those, that's the simplest solution in certain areas of where the water is flowing and hitting the hillside, which was not anticipated either because there's more of it or it just, you know, has moved a little bit, which water is want to do.
Yep, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, we need to be looking forward to the future of this. Like, it, Tony, Tony is making a good point that this is something we need to be acutely aware of because the the, um, large climate projections for this area going into the future do predict stronger, more intense rainstorms, which will continue to exacerbate the erosion issues, so. That is something that we have to pretty much look forward to continuing to happen and get stronger as the years continue, but I'm with Tony on that, we should keep an eye on it, real close eye on it.
My only other, um, comment on this list is the mound and reserve J. Um, I don't know if this is popular or unpopular, I like the mound. Um, a lot of kids want sledding down at this winter, I could see kids running up it and rolling down it and playing king of the hill on it. It's kinda out of the way, I mean, I'll go with whatever they say needs to be done, but I am a fan of the mound.
If I can jump in there, just so everyone understands the issue on the mound being there or not being there or adjusting it. The mound, you know, the, the, the biggest thing is these plats, you know, have a, a full grading plan and, um, drainage plan that's approved as part of it, so the water flows properly. They put the mound in there, I will say that none of the residents have complained about a water issue, which is my first concern in the backyard, so water may be moving just fine. Um, it has to simply be approved. The engineer has to look at it and say, yes, this is a, this is an adjustment, is acceptable, or it's not acceptable for these reasons and you need to mitigate it based on this, so right now it, it may completely stay as is, it may come back with some recommendations to adjust something. I, I don't know until Mike has a, a full look at it, and MI was a little behind on having EMHT prepare something because I touched base with him earlier this week saying, hey, do you wanna get back in front of council, and they said, oh, yes, and they, I think they got on their back burner a little bit, so. So, yeah, I think Mike will get something here shortly and then we'll see exactly what, if any adjustments are made, it may be just fine as is. It just wasn't approved as part of the original plan.
I will say that my, my issue with it is, I think, you know, like you had said, Mark, it's great for, for sledding and kids playing on it, but it's a maintenance issue as to how you go about mowing that thing. You know, and we have that problem with the dam right now, is it's not easy to mow on inclines. You know, and right now that thing is just started off and, and it's a, it's a maintenance issue. I'd like to see it reduced down so it's easily mowed, is what I'm looking for. Because right now it isn't easy to mow that thing and I don't know what, you know, what we're gonna do with that. It's just gonna get overgrown if it's left like it is. That's all I got.
Gotcha, anything else on fourteen, twenty, twenty then, on our punch out list? All right, the last one is seven, twenty, twenty-one, uh, accepting the MI development, second reading. I think this is the we accept, the list is complete, I don't think we're there yet, but it's only a second reading. Does that sound about right to everyone?
Yes.
And some heads nodding yes. And there ends legislation. Um, and I am gonna ask the chair and everyone to excuse me for about two minutes as I run upstairs and let the dogs out for their morning potty break and we'll be back in two minutes.
Okay, your excuse.
Okay, well, mine's saying something, but he's on mute, so I'm gonna assume he says you're okay. Sorry about that, I was obviously muted, uh, yeah, so we're at the end of legislation, so circling back, we had earlier in the work session, uh, said we'd come back to discussing TIF financing. Uh, and so, uh, Mayor Hughes had brought up, or we had, we have in previous finance committee meetings and a few other meetings. Uh, begun the conversation of exploring TIF financing, right, a means by which we could borrow against future TIF funds to finance a building, our building project and our lakes project. Uh, it sounds like Mayor Hughes and our legal team have done a beginning of investigating that. And now the message is, it's probably possible, but it's gonna cost money to do it. So I think at this point now, what we need to do is determine whether or not we want to spend the money to do it. Right, and all, I, I, I think my first question and all that is, do we have any idea how much money we're talking about? You're on mute, Mayor Hughes.
There you go.
Okay, Jesse, do you want to talk a little bit about as far as?
So, sure, absolutely, so what we usually do when you, we're exploring the potential and which types of bonds, uh, that we'd want to do in the TIF and see if we wanna move forward with a bond issuance. Uh, is we do just the preliminary legwork, we work out all the options, it's basically a big math formula. Um, and it involves, it does, it involves a fair bit of legal work, uh, at the upfront and most of it will be done by Emmett Kelly with our firm, who's a, a partner in our bond finance group. Uh, and, and what we usually peg that initial work at is, you know, in the ballpark of ten thousand dollars, that at, at the top end, that's not to say we would hit that, but it's just on an hourly rate type, type deal. And then, if we decide to move forward with the bond issuance, that can range anywhere from thirty to sixty thousand. Uh, but that, I will say, comes out of the, the, the loan funds and the bond fund, so essentially doesn't come out of your pockets, that obviously would go to you, uh, if it, i- if it didn't go to the attorneys, but you know, essentially, we handle all of the, the paperwork, the issuance and, uh, the dealings with the, with the lending institutions, so that's, that's a ballpark, it depends on the on, on what you decide to move forward with, uh, on the type of, uh, of bond and complexity of it. Uh, but that's just the general ballpark to get you started.
All right, so, so you brought me to a follow up question, uh, and that is that Mayor Hughes had also talked about, you know, that we are at a point where it's time for us to start uh, investigating if not TIF financing, uh, just more traditional government bond issuance for the, the building project alone. Um, it sounds to me like that starts in very much the same way, right, we're still gonna need uh, you know, I think you said the name was Emmett, right, we're probably still gonna need Emmett to go and do basically the same or very similar legwork to determine the bond, you know, what bonds are available or how, how all that is going to work and get all that legal legwork done. So what's the, what's the delta there, right, how much cheaper is it for him to keep the TIF off the table versus, right, because that's, that's the savings.
Right, uh, and, and, you know, the, the upfront is probably about the same, if we had something up, budget up to ten thousand dollars to let him do some some legwork on that, which obviously i- it is my firm, so I do have an interest in it, but I could not recommend strongly enough getting an attorney to do that type of work.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, so it's taken, you know, so we, we just have ourselves covered all the way down the line, so it's probably again in that ten to fifteen range to have him do all the legwork and be totally comfortable with what we do.
Right, so, well, so I, I, I feel like I, we just already had a bit of a slide there, right, we went from ten at the top to ten to fifteen, so is that that extra five represents the difference between what we anticipate would be the maximum upfront cost with.
With probably the. Correct.
Okay, so that, I think, I think the question to council then is is that additional cost to investigate, uh, or get the legal groundwork laid out for potential TIF financing, is that juice worth the squeeze?
I, I would say that, um, if we were going to we, council has spent ten, ten to twelve thousand, I think, uh, for our grant writer. Uh, and, um, we were considering spending that just for that person to do research. So I mean, this is not out of, uh, the realm of what we would consider doing for other things, so. Uh, although it's not, not cheap, obviously, but I, is there any way that at, at some point in the process uh, that, you know, like a grant writer, we get a, a sort of a lump sum quote or a not to exceed or for the proj- a project, uh, based quote rather than just having it open ended hourly?
Oh, sure, sure, and, and I, I would say that that ten thousand on the, the general grants, uh, or fifteen would be a not to exceed. So we would get you what you need, uh, at that number before you make a decision to move forward with an issuance either way.
That'd be nice, I, I'd be much more comfortable exploring with, with those kind of parameters.
But I guess, I guess the point is, is that, uh, just to do that uh, what is the appetite for moving forward because we need to we need to feel like there is an appetite for moving forward at least more than fifty, I mean, just, do, do we really have the votes to if that research comes back to, uh, uh, are we more favorable, are we, are we likely to vote more going forward with it?
I, I have one more question, just so that I have wrapped my head around the expected outcomes, right, if we're talking about a fifteen thousand not to exceed are we gonna get, you know, hey, if you just wanna do the biz, the building only, here's how you could issue bonds. Uh, you know, without, uh, financing against the TIF, and if you wanna do it all uh, here's how you could do that issue bonds against that future TIF income all in for building and lakes, if, if that's what we get for a, a fifteen, not, not to exceed fifteen I'm, I'm in because I think that's the only way we're ever gonna get it all done in my lifetime.
And my answer would be yes, obviously, I'll, I'll, I'll run that by Emmett, but he's expressed to me that he's obviously willing to work with the village on, on, on getting the options out on the table, so I, I don't see why that would be a problem, I'll certainly make sure of that, but I don't see it being a problem.
All right.
Works for me.
Yeah.
Hey, Brian, did I answer your question?
I have no idea what the question was, I'm sorry.
You, you, that was what you asked.
Oh.
You were, you were asking and I, I passed it on, you asked me and I passed it on to Jesse.
Just to, just to be sure I understand then, um, that what we would get is, is, uh, alternative, so if, if borrowing against the TIF is, is not the suggested, it's one alternative, we'd also, as Brian stated, we we would be working with, uh, Kim, Polly and finance to to confirm alternatives, bonds, et cetera, et cetera, based on our budget. Expected income, okay, well, I've been wanting that for, uh, two years, so I, I'm cool with that. Myself.
I've been mentioning it for two years myself.
I moved here around two years ago.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, so assuming that we can, um, you can confirm with Emmett that we could get maybe some multiple things. Um, I mean, I'm, I, this is something that I don't have to bring to you guys, but I obviously on something like this would like to pass it through you guys. So a- assuming that Jesse gives me, yes, we'll be able to get some multiple options, then I'll go ahead and get, get moving with Jesse directly on that, because that is um, with them, that's something I don't have to bring, I, I don't wanna say it that way, but um, we can just move forward, we don't have to have three readings and all that kinda stuff to sign the contract with Jesse, so as long as he comes back with the answer that we're looking for, then I'll go ahead and get it signed and get moving, I like now, so.
Excellent, 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 excellent.
I just wanted, again, I, I think, you know, I just kinda wanna have, make sure that you guys are on the same page with moving forward on, on this, so. And then, um, to, to, Brian, I know this is your meeting, but then we go to step two. And I don't know your guys' feelings on meeting with the architect. I mean, I feel like there's definite, you know, everybody's still on board to continue to keep that project moving forward, you know, I know financing's kind of a big part of it, but I think you know, again, we will figure that out. Um, we were going to email Ted and find out whether or not maybe the nineteenth or the twenty-sixth or another date would work to have him come in and do like an overview of where we are, um, the design of the building and Eric, again, if you wanna chime in, but um, I don't know if you guys have a preference, I don't know if, you know, if that's okay, if there's a better date. You know, we were thinking maybe you, since the twenty-sixth, there's a short meeting, maybe bringing them in at the beginning of that meeting. Um, if you feel like maybe turning that work session on the nineteenth, but that's actually pretty quick. I don't even know that we could get any financing options, but maybe we don't really need specific financing options yet, because I think I mean, those could take weeks.
I would say for my, for my standard on this, um, definitely wanna meet with and see the architects, of course, by the so a couple of things, one, I feel the building is a priority. I feel that no matter what, we know we can, we know we can afford it. Um, whether we can afford other things, we know that, whatever bonds or borrowing against the TIF, this is, we know we can afford to. this is, we know we can afford to get the money for the building. How we do it is how we do it. Eventually, we're gonna have to come to, you know, voting on and approving plans and approving bids. And the sooner the six council members can see what's being planned, the sooner we can say, oh yeah, this is heading in a right direction, and not end up with a set of plans put before us that we look at and go, oh, there's no way I'm voting for that, you, you did what? There's, there's, there's a water slide from the first floor to the second floor because the police officer said it'd be fun for break time? No. Yeah, and that's obviously an absurd example, but those are the only thing I can come up with.
But it would be nice.
Yeah, yeah, I'm all for meetings and making sure, okay, this is going in the direction where the council is gonna be when asked to approve things, be like, oh yeah, yeah, we, we knew this was coming, we talked about it. So yeah, as, as much as I trust the people and admin who are looking at it and looking out for the, the community and, and trying to do what's right by everyone. Yeah, I'm, I'm all for those meetings.
Alright, what we'll do is, we will see, get some dates and times from them. If we did the 19th or the 26th, if we did the 26th, we would probably do right before the council meeting. If we did the 19th, what is the earliest people could do that? I mean, could you do a six o'clock? Could everybody do six o'clock?
Yeah. Here.
Okay, Eric, you and I will talk about that on Monday, we'll see if we can get some dates and times for them. And then bring them to you guys if it's not a date that they can do. Because I, I don't know how, I, I'm sure they do evening appointments, but I'm sure they're, they don't get thrilled about doing those, but I'm sure it'll work.
We'll come to it, so.
So that wrapped up the, I think, the TIF financing discussion and, and some next steps for building. Other things I had captured in this conversation, I think we had put a pin in the, the flock, the license plate cameras, I think we had wanted to bring that to a larger council conversation, just to make sure that we all understood what we were talking about there, and we all were in agreement. I know it came out of the safety committee meeting, as I recommend, but I don't know that we've had that discussion as a council. Did anybody else have questions or concerns, or are we okay just to continue those readings as, as they are?
Did Mark suggest tabling that?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I was doing some research on why not? Just what people who are opposed to it, why are they opposed to it? And it was kind of interesting. And I, they were bringing up, which is, which were not, I mean, they were bringing up how HOAs are, are putting them in, and how that's problematic, because that's, of course, a a citizens group and releasing information on other citizens or having other citizens looking at it, who's doing one, who's going where, could be a problem in, in those areas. Now, we're gonna have this, we don't have that necessarily, because we, we're having the police manage the files and determine what, what gets shown or what gets shared and what doesn't get shared. So we don't necessarily have that, however. I guess the biggest concern of people who are paranoid about this is that, and it's not an invalid concern, is that people who have different living habits, comings and goings at different times, other than the eight to five workday, might get singled out or focused on unfairly, or get talked about. So it's, you know, that has come up, so I guess the, the, the point is from the purists is, you know, when, you, you know, collecting information and assuming that everybody's gonna be good and not use it for other purposes is not something that they, they, you know, want to, want to take a chance on. The other thing is, is that the, a lot of times cameras don't catch the license plates. And, but they do, if, if a person was driving by and had, in the vicinity of an incident and had the same color car, the same model of the car, they could be targeted unnecessarily, because the police are doing an investigation and they're starting talking to anybody who had a car like that who lives in, in the area. So, or might get pulled over unnecessarily because they had the same make and model of car. And so those are the kinds of concerns people had is, is with, with cameras. So I think those concerns are not invalid. Yes.
Okay, so here's a couple, a couple things that I will say. The access to the data, this is actually done, and maybe it's the company, maybe it's not, and maybe I should have had more information on this, but even I am not allowed to access the information. This is not public information necessarily, this is, police department can access the information, and it can be shared with other police departments. So Suzie can't call me and say, I think there was a girl at my husband's house in a red car, or at my house, and he's got a girlfriend, I need this information. It is not accessible that way whatsoever. So that's number one. Number two, camera or not, people can, you know, when you have a description of a car, I, I knew some of you guys had seen the video, my nephew was watching, I'll give a quick story, my nephew was watching my house with my kids, and there was a burglary over, off of, at the pizza place. They followed them, came onto my property, this was Columbus, not Minerva Park, with guns drawn. That can happen to anybody at any time, camera or not. So I'm just saying that, you know, unfortunately, it, it does happen. I mean, you're not gonna get away with that, whether it's a silver car that was caught on a camera, or a silver car that was caught by a person's vision. If they're looking for a car, they're gonna target a car of that description, so with a camera, without a camera, that happens. And then the other part was the, I, I think the biggest part is, like I said, it can't be used for anything else. It is, I will not have access to it, I cannot have access to it, you guys can't have access to it. It will be strictly for the police department. Moving the, I, moving it is $250, I only wanted to point this part out, because we don't have necessarily set locations, we have thoughts of where we may put to, but do we put it at the north, you know, the one side of Minerva Lake Road or this side? We can move them around, we're not gonna do it often, because it's $250 to move them. But it's something that most people won't even know that they're there, I think, is the other thing. And if, I, I'm gonna be a jerk and say this. I, I would, I would, if there was one outside my house, I would feel safer that way. It's pulling over, the only time they get dinged is if it is, the license tag is, there's, there's a wanted person or something like that, that's how it actually registers. So every person that's driving by is not getting dinged on the police department's system. It's only if there's, you know, somebody over there that is a wanted felon or something like that, that's how the police department gets dinged. Now, it's, yes, they can pull license tags of everybody that's been over there on, I'm sure, some sort of system, but that's not, the whole point to it is, is to know if there's somebody coming down Minerva Lake Road that has 14 felonies, it's, that's, that's what they're looking for.
Well, not, not just 14 felonies on the record, it's, they have open warrants on 14 felony charges.
Correct.
That's the, right, it's, it's, it is notifying our police when some, when a license plate that is associated with an open warrant.
And it doesn't even mean that that's the person driving the car. So again, it's, you know, and I, I'm only gonna say this for me. It's just another way of trying to know what's going on inside your village. I, I think that that's, that's the biggest thing with everything that's currently going on right now. I think that there's, you know, there is a sense for people of privacy, and I'm, I'm not going to, you know, some people feel, feel differently. For me, I'm willing to, I, I would want it anywhere and everywhere, because I know what I'm currently dealing with. So I, I like the fact of having more security and more safety of knowing who's driving through here.
Well, you know, this seems like this conversation started with the, with wanting to monitor the basketball area and turned into a, let's monitor the village.
Well, I don't think it's necessarily targeting just the basketball court, in, in my opinion. I think it's another tool that we can use, and the reason that it did come up is because there was somebody that was frequenting the basketball court. But we get a lot of reports of, there's this, like you had mentioned, there's a silver car flying through here, there's this flying through here. And again, that could be on, I think, two of our biggest, or one of our biggest speeding roads is Minerva Lake Road, so I think that that needs to be one of the roads that it's on. But it's locating, you know, trying to get an idea and descriptions of cars, that we are getting multiple reports of, you know, this car is doing this. There was a Saturday a long time ago that there was a silver car running every single speed, you know, stop sign through the village. So, and I believe that that was actually somebody that lived here. So again, I think it's just more, it's not just monitoring the basketball court. It would, it could potentially be used for that, I don't, I personally don't have an issue with that. Because of, you know, trying to, we have had, that's where our Facebook complaints have come from, there's no other way to say it. Between the speeding vehicles leaving, according to people leaving the basketball court area, that, that is one of the areas, but you can't, again, where do you put it to monitor just the basketball court? You can't, you're gonna have to pick a street and hope for the best. I mean, we can't have, they're $2,500 each, we can't have one on every single street. So I think in the vicinity. But that was, that was the start of the discussion. Tony?
Well, this is, you know, kind of goes along the lines of what I'd like to start talking about with the chief. In how we go about policing the village and the surrounding community. You know, to me, this is the thing that I'm starting to notice, and, and, you know, in the last couple of weeks, I've seen the police pull over, searching cars four times that I've seen. Then there's the other, you know, kid that I didn't see get, you know, ser- have his car searched. Just my question, you know, the, the police, it costs 1.124 million, you know, a million, $100,000 this year for our police department. And I get, the question I'd like to start talking about is, do we want to protect the North Columbus or Minerva Park? Because, you know, I see them out there, you know, getting guns and felons and drugs off the roads, but are they really making our community any safer? And it's costing a million, 1.1 million dollars to do this. And now we're gonna get another machine that can find some more people that are felons and, you know, you know, so I guess my question, or the conversation I'd like to start having is, how much do we want to spend on our police department? You know, we can get more machines and find more criminals, and we can get three officers on duty, because we're constantly running people downtown. You know, so, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of having these, these machines, but it's how we go about using them that I'm worried about.
I agree with Tony, safeguards are important for a system like this when you're dealing with surveillance issues.
Brian?
Was, I think Tony came around and addressed what I wanted to point out, was that, you know, the difference between these cameras that are in question, and the other things he was talking about is that these would be in the village.
Correct.
Right? This isn't about searching cars on Cleveland Avenue or 161. This is about what are the, what are the cars within our borders? And can we identify people with open warrants on violent crimes that we can then, you know, take action on?
I get that, but it's just like, you know, I'm, I know we're not saying that we're gonna put them out on Cleveland Avenue, but it's, if we put them on Minerva Lake Road, what we're doing is gonna catch people that are passing through our village. You know, and I understand, you know, that that's a good thing, but it has a cost. And that's what I'm trying to bring up to everyone here, is that our, we're already spending $1.1 million on our police, and we start doing more stuff like this, it's gonna cost more money. Like I said, I saw three police officers out, this is really, you know, I want to find out what happened with this one. Three of, we have three officers pulling over and searching a car. You know, it's like, how much, to me, I, I guess it's just, I look at the, how much it costs us to do that. And I love to know what the heck they found, if anything.
Some of them can't be discussed, and I'm not gonna go into detail on that. But I will tell you that in the last, and, and actually, I won't, I'll, if Chief wants to address it, or maybe this all just needs to go to a safety committee, because I, I, I'm gonna, I will say this, and I may get myself in trouble. I don't think most people in the surrounding, in this particular village, has any idea what is currently going on within, I'm even gonna say, 100, 200 feet of our village and inside our village, and that, I'm gonna leave it at that. So I, I obviously know, because I see things, but, you know, and that's honestly because our, and I'm gonna say this. I don't know what I'm supposed to see and what I'm not supposed to see, because we don't have privacy in our vil- in our police department. That's why I always like to tread lightly, because I don't know that there's things that I'm not even supposed to know, and maybe I shouldn't say that on a live stream video. But there's not, the police don't really have any privacy, if they're downstairs talking about something and I'm upstairs, I can hear everything they're saying. So I don't know what I'm supposed to know and what I'm not, so I don't want to go in detail. But I, I will say that again, Tony, like you're alluding to, you are seeing things like that. And I'm, I'm just gonna tell you, I don't know about that particular case, but I think people would be shocked if they had any idea.
But do you know, but you don't know where they're getting pulled over from. My opinion is it's happening on Cleveland Avenue.
And, and Tony, half of them are, like you said, cutting right through Minerva, you, we're getting Amazon boxes stolen, people just climbing right down, you know, Minerva Lake Road, people coming through here stealing cars. I mean, it is happening in our village, so it is.
And that's why we'll talk, we'll talk about this in the safety meeting, because this is, I'm so glad that I've become chairman of the safety.
Right, but I just want to remind.
Been near and dear to my heart, is that there's a difference between making Minerva Park safe and making North Columbus safe.
I don't think there is, I think every single one of us drive outside of there, this is a safety meeting, Brian, I see you trying to say that. So all I'm gonna say is, we definitely will agree to disagree, because I, I want to be able to go out on my bicycle and ride down Cleveland Avenue, and I want to be able to walk down 100 feet from my house, because I live three doors from Cleveland Avenue, I want to be able to drive, to be able to walk to GFS.
So, and for that, you know, like you were saying, I think this is a much bigger conversation than what this meeting is intended for. What we were talking about was, are we anticipating any of the council people raising substantive objection against the proposed legislation or the legislation that we're reading regarding the two license plate reader cameras? I think that we heard Diane Shrim's concerns, I haven't heard any, you know, we, any other concerns regarding the, the cameras, other than, you know, general use and ensuring that they are operated equitably, that sort of stuff. And I think that's a policy and procedures kind of thing, and I think Mayor Hughes addressed that with how the information is handled by the company that we would be contracting with. So unless anybody else has something new, more or different to add, I will say that we've put that one to bed for now. Alright, the last thing I had captured for this meeting was that we told Joe that we would circle back to get a streets meeting, streets commission, committee meeting scheduled, so why don't we, why don't we take the, a moment now to get that streets committee meeting scheduled, so that we can hit the rest of our Saturday, knowing that that's on the books.
Alright, well, we've already got a meeting for Tuesday. So Thursday, if we're trying to get this soon.
I can't do Thursday.
Well, we're looking at next week then, maybe. Unless we did it before the council meeting Monday, that's kind of soon.
I vote for next week.
Well, what about Tuesday next week, say it's seven o'clock?
Hang on.
Who is it? Me, you, and who else?
We could do it Monday, because there's no council meeting next Monday.
I think there's a work session, unless you guys don't want to do those, I believe there is always, there has been, because we don't, I, I don't, doesn't matter to me. Okay, Wednesday. When do we have, when's community, Tuesday?
Tuesday at seven.
Tuesday at, um, seven.
Okay, the only thing I have is Wednesday and Wednesday. So I just can't do Wednesday, Wednesday, or Friday, Friday, Fri, no Wednesday, no Friday.
Are we talking about Wednesday this week or next week?
I can't do Wednesday either week or Friday either week.
Well, thank goodness cuz Joe was talking about Thursday. So is Thursday still good?
Works. It does work.
Okay.
The 15th. Is that what we want? Wednesday or Thursday, the 15th?
Yeah. Okay.
And that's, that's at seven, right?
So community is at seven, streets is at seven. And then we'll find out, Tony, when Chief can do the safety. But I know he likes to do them. Brian, isn't it usually four or five that we do those?
Yeah, we try to keep it early so that it's like the tail end of his workday without having to, you know, log on later.
Okay. We'll ask him. I'll have him prepared for it to see what dates he can do. He's usually pretty flexible.
All right, well then with that scheduled, that was the last thing I had on my list to circle back on for this meeting. So I will throw it out there. Does anybody have, uh, we should come back around to new business, old business. Is anybody intending to bring up new business on Monday?
No, but I have a few things I'm gonna tell you guys.
Okay.
Patterson Pool is getting ready to do all the landscaping and all of the, sod and all that kinda stuff. So we're working on getting the water and everything on for them to be able to complete that. And I'm just going through my emails. There was one other thing I was gonna tell you. Um, just as an FYI for you guys, I am shortening the open hours in the community building, um, just because we're open from eight to four. And yes, it is busy, but I'm doing nine to four. Because at this point, being open all those hours doesn't make a lot of sense. They will still work from eight to four. But at this point, having people come in and doing all that kinda stuff, it gives them time to be able to get some of their stuff done in the mornings before uninterrupted. Entering tickets and doing that kinda stuff, but just as an FYI, and Tony, we did take off that we weren't doing.
Notary.
Yeah, we're not doing that right now. But other than that, that was the only other big thing that I have and I don't think anybody cares about that, but we're doing nine to four.
Well, I would point out that we used to be, you know, three to nine, nine hours a week, three, you know, nine to two, or whatever that was. So.
That is a discussion. I mean, honestly, I wanted to do nine to three, but then I thought it was cutting off too much for residents to be able to do it. And the issue that we have is a full-time person needs to be X amount of hours. And then it ends up being not a full-time position and yada, yada, yada. So we, we are trying to consolidate a few things to get. But anyways, I'm not gonna go into all that right now, but that's not part of the meeting. But just as an FYI.
Very good. And, uh, anybody intending on bringing up old business, uh, for Monday? No, then I think we have gotten through everything. Oh, yeah, go ahead, Diane.
I just wanted to get a few things. So are you saying that we can tell people the baby pool will be available this season?
Oh, yes, definitely. That was the whole reason you guys passed as an emergency last year so we could get this bad boy open.
Well, I know, but things happen. So I just, I didn't wanna be incorrect. I, people had been, a few people had asked me and I didn't know. It looked like it was moving along, but, okay, so, um, okay, and then on the, um, as far as the office being open, I think it used to be that, uh, there were, uh, if, if the, the office hours during the day were shortened, but there were at least one or two days where the office was open in a, a couple hours in the evening, as I recall.
Lynn had hours, but the building was not open.
Okay.
By appointment.
By appointment.
Yeah, because code enforcement, none of them are actually gonna be there. So for me to open the door that I can't help anybody with is kinda pointless. So Lynn did have two hours in the evening, which technically she didn't, and I'm just gonna say this, I know, those were just when we had council meetings is when she did those.
Well, so people really can't, uh, okay, so people have to take off work if they wanna talk to someone about.
That's government. That's any government that you go to.
Well, I know, but we don't have to be any government.
Well, unless.
We're a small village and we can decide that we wanna be a special environment.
More hours, where you have to pay somebody to be there in the evenings.
Well, well, or Saturday, uh, if you had, I, I'm just.
And we can, we can definitely hire another person to do more than 40 hours, but I think.
I know, you were talking about having trouble, uh, maybe if you shorten hours, one thing you could do is have alternating, you could have, you could, someone there, a shorter hours during the week, but then the, wrap up the 40 hours on a Saturday. If they, if they were like the admin who could actually do something, as you say.
They'd say, hey Leah, do you want to stay till seven, one Monday a month? So that you can leave at noon, one Friday that month. And then you're, you know, if you just switch it, like, we have one Monday a month where someone will be in there till seven o'clock. And whoever covers that gets to be done at noon on Friday and get, you know, you could flex time it to where it wanna change hour.
You can, but here's the problem. 99% of the people that wanna come in, they don't wanna see me, they don't wanna see Leah, they don't wanna see the app, or they want the code enforcement. They're, they're there for permits. 90% of our people are there for permits. So staying open just to take somebody's permit and tell them that they're gonna be in from noon to four or 10 to two. Um, and I would, and I know Eric's on here and he can vouch for that. Unless it's dropping off, I mean, we do get a lot of drop-off pool memberships. I mean, people come in constantly, the, the, Amazon people and, but getting the green bins, that kinda stuff. But the majority of the people are there for permits. They are dropping off permits. They have permit questions. That is, so if we stayed open late, it would just be for me to stand there or somebody to stand there and say, code enforcement's not here, not code enforcement, but you know, the person that you need to talk to is not here, um, but I can take it and give it to him. That's the only reason you would be staying openly, in which we have a bin that they can drop those off at, and then that person calls them the next day anyways. So, I mean, can we make it more difficult? Yes. Can we stay up until seven? Yes. Can we increase the hours even more to make it more convenient for residents? Yes. Is it necessary? I haven't had any complaints whatsoever about the hours. So, but I think less hour, it, it's, it's really not necessary to have the door open that many hours. And like, like she's alluding to, we used to be open nine hours a week.
Well, that sounds good.
Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. The, the newsletter, um, we're adding back, uh, the mayor's decided to go ahead, she has some Facebook comments and to go ahead and re-add the police report, although the communication committee was ambivalent about whether it was on there or not. There were some people who asked for it. Mayor just decided to put it on there. The, the, the small police summary. Um, and, uh, so anyone else who has something small for the newsletter? It's the 23rd is a Friday, so anytime, uh, if anyone has something, then the 23rd, at the end of the day, I don't mind if it comes in over the weekend, but it really has to be submitted by Monday morning to Inskeep. So 23rd for any articles. Okay, now I'm done. Thank you.
A quick question. The, you know, pool opening thing, you know, sign up and blah, blah, blah. Are we doing the resident $5 after five day pass this year? I can't remember if we decided that.
As of now, no, only because of COVID, we don't know that we're gonna be able to or not be able to. So I think we removed it again. Um, I can't remember if it's in legislation and I think it's in legislation that if we don't have COVID rules and regulations that we can implement it. If I'm not mistaken, we actually put that clause in the legislation. But as of now, no.
Thanks. Cool. All right, then, uh, I believe we are at an end here. So unless anybody has a late, late breaking, something they wanna bring up. So going once, going twice. All right, we are done. Move to adjourn. All in favor? Have a great day, everybody.